Please take your seats. I'll now invite deputations to speak. Each deputation and individual attending will have three minutes speaking time. The submissions you've provided and verbal submissions will not enjoy Legislative Council power and privileges, cap 382, protection and exemptions. So, first speaker, Ms. Au He Man.
I'm a Ma Shibo villageer and also represent Faling North. In the northeast, the villagers have been under pressure to relocate. In 1999, when the first report was issued, in 96, real estate developers had been acquiring land. A lot of villagers had been forced to leave without anything, and those who continue to live there every day, they are pressured by real estate agents and so on. Why do we insist? It's because we enjoy our lifestyle. The government has found it very hard to rationalize its policy. We need to review the whole urban rural development, and we find that the northeast doesn't solve housing problems. It pushes further towards inequity and further widens the rich-poor gap. We need to calculate population demographics, we need to consider population policy, we need to consider the government's fiscal reserves, we also need to consider the different land holdings. We had asked... There is no rational reason for the government policy. The government had not responded to these questions. In the northeast NT, they've only been making minor amendments to the whole plan. The whole plan is biased towards real estate developers. They have not considered villagers, agriculture and industry. Villagers insist the government withdraw its plan. They should not suppress the little person in favor of rich developers. We want to protect local industry, local agriculture, we want choice, and the government should address the problem of land being monopolized by real estate developers. Withdraw the plan, we will not relocate. I'd like to remind speakers that during the meeting, please maintain silence to avoid interrupting our proceedings. Ms. Wong So Hui.
I'm a Popo community farm member. I'd like to share a story with you. There was a child called Popo. He was very poor, he lived in a squatter area. He wanted to improve his family's standard of living, so he worked very hard. He didn't mind working from scratch, and he started to acquire property, invested in subdivided flats and invested in farmland. But since all the property is not his, it belongs to his wife and his relatives, so very unfortunately, he is an impotent person as labeled by Haou Tiekang. And later on, Popo joined the government, and the government needed to develop the northeast NT, so we now have two outcomes. The first, even though Popo understands that the northeast NT is inequitable, it's unfair, but he's appointed this role, he has to complete his function, so against all objections and even family being tailed by the media, he still wants to promote this plan. When the bulldozers raze the northeast, well, after his term, he now realizes that the whole NT is shopping malls and high-rise buildings. He can't find a tranquil area to retire. He can't even enjoy local produce. And after consuming too much mainland produce, he finally falls sick, so he regrets promoting the NT and northeast, but it's too late, he can't go back. The second ending, while Popo is still secretary, he dreams, he has a dream of meeting with Jesus. After waking up, he understands the meaning of these six words. He realizes that the development plan destroys homes, it destroys sustainable development, so he will not become a landholder, he becomes a farmer. He realizes even though as an official, he did not respect villagers, but the villagers do not hold a grudge against him, they teach him how to farm. Now he realizes that the pursuit of money and fame is illusory, it's human interaction is actually more important. So this is a fictional story, if there's any resemblance, it's just a coincidence. Chuck Kai Kai. A lot of different people have come to Ledge Co., we've heard the general public, we've heard people from interested parties, I think. Whether you're for or against, they have put forward a lot of reasons, a lot of emotional speeches, I'd like to share with you. The Inuit Indians, they say, what we own is from nature, it's not what our ancestors left, it's just borrowed from our future generation. If you understand this, you understand, no matter what your belief is, we come to this earth and one day we will depart, what can we take with us? But what impact do we have on earth? We object to NT-NE, a lot of people are giving their reasons, population policy, economic policy, what is the government's policy? There's no planning. That has been stated very clearly. So what do we want to achieve? There is some discussion in Ledge Co., should we provide more excrement allowance, relocation allowance, can that persuade villagersly? You remember in the movie, Tom Bakfu Dingsong? Tom Bakfu takes a ferry trip, but the ferry didn't move at all. And Tom Bakfu asked the ferry operator, "You said it was the fastest," and he said, "Yes, it's the fastest sinking." So where is the Development Bureau taking us? You're saying the ferry is about to leave, come on board? So people who have monopolized land, held land, but you're now kicking the villagers off the boat. So where is this boat heading? Are we going to a happy place, or are we going to a place where the rich-poor chasm is even greater? In the last 30 years, we had not stopped development. If we continue building... If it makes people happy, then why do we have 200,000 vacant homes? Why do we have such high land prices? I think you should have a clear answer. I think Mr. Chan is under a lot of pressure, I want to say that the villagers are also under a lot of pressure every day. But we do have choice. Next, Mr. Zhang Fan Hong.
I'm a villageer from Ma Shibo Village. Mr. Paul Chan is in front of me. I had a lot of words, I wanted to berate him for why he wanted to dismantle homes, but on the internet, there is an interview, a report, and I actually sympathize with him why he wants to improve his family's living, he wants the family to be better off, but today, it seems he has lost his human side. So you want to improve your family's lot, but all the villagers here, they're also trying to improve their lot. Everybody just wants to have a stable job, you want to pursue money, you want to invest, that's your choice, but you also need to respect other people who want to live with nature and who want to provide quality produce and live under a blue sky rather than in an air-conditioned room. So, Mr. Chan, can you understand? Please don't take the difficulties you faced or the unhappiness you encountered in your past, that might have been motivation for you to improve. A lot of people might want to live in subdivided housing, subdivided flats, or want to move on to government housing, but times have changed, there are other ways to improve livelihood. A lot of people who oppose to NT-NE plan, first of all, there are other options, and the affected villagers are actually living quite well. So if the secretary wants Hong Kong people to have better living conditions, you should make reference to different views. A better future is not just blindly developing and a traditional economic development, there are a lot of possibilities. I think everybody has mentioned them, and I hope you can listen. Next, Mr. Yong Kinsung. I've been a villageer, living in Ma Shibo for decades over the years. I've been harassed by court summons, by lawyers' letters, so... I am very angered that real estate developers who purchase land and leave it fallow and wait to develop. Mr. Paul Chan, after taking up the post, after the CE policy address, he said he would use the traditional development, so Mr. Chan, a few days later in a radio inf, had the opposite view. So I asked, "Why is the government's stance so fickle? Why does a new secretary, why does he oppose his senior officials?"
After some time, I know what this means, because you are going to be the candidate for the next, as a next to CE, and there was a U-turn earlier this month, and that would be an enhanced model of public-private partnership. Well, everyone finds this problematic, it is a proposal tailor-made for the property developers. What is most strange is that the government has used the excuse of avoiding legal cases or litigation. If the government wants to shy away from litigation, why don't you ask the police not to arrest anyone? I think this is all very strange, these kinds of remarks. I originally didn't understand why the government has proceeded against all objection and proceed with the PPP motto. I have the answer this week, because there are a lot of under-table benefits. Well, the price is $17.5 per square feet, and then you are trying to repay this debt at the expense of the interest of the villagers. So can the government tell me what is the price of the government acquiring land back in those days, in the old days? I think the ICEC can conduct a thorough investigation on the matter. Well, when will the government come to survey the villagers? Next, Mr. Li Kai Chi. I live in Shat Wu Village. I've lived in the squatter areas for over two decades. You will develop NE-NT. Why don't you develop also on the Faling Golf Club? There is a long queue of people waiting to be rehoused in public housing. Mr. Paul Chan, you are trying to do a good, well, you are trying to do, well, you are doing a bad thing out of good intentions. Well, please stop what you are doing. You are trying to support your wife and your family members. These days, it will be difficult to serve as a government official, and the CE said that he would go down to the districts to listen to people's views, but we've never seen government officials coming around our area. If you visit our area, I will not stage any protest. Well, there have been many protests in the past, I've seen them all, against the Star Ferry, artificial flower factory. Well, I don't think protests are the best way to go forward. You are proposing an excrasure payment of $600,000. I can lead a very rural life. Well, I would like to invite you to lead such a life with me. I think you should go by the principle of resettlement first and demolition later, but I think you should take back the land of the Faling Golf Club. There are so many people, some 300,000 people, waiting for a PRH flat. Mr. Lee Wing Ta, Mr. Wong Kwan are not here today. I want to ask them, how many vacant PRH units are there? Why don't you let people move into those vacant flats? You have many people living in subdivided units now, and you've got vacant units left idle, and you're not allowing people to move in. I want to put this question to Mr. Wong Kwan, he's not here. Mr. Lee Wing Ta is not here either, and Professor Nelson Chow, he's not here either. I think people, villagers, should be properly rehoused in such kind of development. Mr. Au Ho Man. I am a farmer and a resident in Ma Shibo Village. This plan aims to build a lot of PRH units. It raises suspicions that the Hong Kong government is selling off Hong Kong, and it's involved transfer of benefits. A lot of studies undertaken by the community in recent years show that NE-NT development is not related to the problems we are facing now in Hong Kong, and the CE in terms of food safety, population production and land housing policy, he's not devising good policies at all. And in terms of government officials in charge of environment and food safety and so on, they've proved to be incompetent and have low moral standards, and they try to stick, stay on their positions, and they don't want to step down, and that's not good. The NE-NT is drawing the largest farmland in Hong Kong, and 100 hectares of land, of farmland, are there, and in the mainland, there are heavy, serious food safety problems, and in fact, apart from milk powder, a lot of mainlanders are buying food in Hong Kong, including fresh vegetables from the NT, but the Hong Kong government all along doesn't have any farming policy to ensure that we are self-sufficient enough for supply. So now they are even adopting this model to wipe out all the farmland in Pancher, Faling, and so on, and they are transferring the benefits to the property developers. Since the handover... The property developers are greedy, have been greedy, and if the NE-NT project goes ahead, the NT West and NT South projects will also proceed, and all the farmland in Hong Kong will be gone. We oppose the NE-NT project, and it is as important an issue as fighting for universal suffrage in Hong Kong. We oppose this project, and we ask the government to take heed of community views. Mr. Au Lau Khan, next one. I am a farmer in Ma Shibo Village, I was born in Ma Shibo, I live here. I strongly oppose the NE-NT project. My parents, in the 50s, came to Ma Shibo, they dug their own well, built their own houses, and farmed their own farmland, and they provided for their whole family, and they worked very hard to provide for the family and build their homes. We've been here for three generations, and we've led a happy life all along. Now, in our generation, because of this NE-NT project, our home will be torn down. I am very angry, because the Development Bureau has never respected our way of life here. This land has provided for three generations, I love this piece of land, and to farmers, the land is our life, lifeblood, and the government is trying to snatch away our farmland, it's like killing us, taking away our life. Without farmland, we don't have a life to lead at all, we don't have our home, what are we going to do? The government has proposed agricultural rehabilitation, it's not as easy as it sounds. We have to study the ecological value of the farmland, and we have to build the sales network, and it may take five to 10 years, or even longer. In Ma Shibo, three generations here have worked hard to build up the home that we have today. Farming is not easy at all. You can't, well, just to relocate people easily, and you are not respecting the farmers at all, and you are asking us to farm at Kowloon South, and actually, the land there has been hoarded up by the property developers, and there is so much hoarded land in the NT, a lot of development projects going on. If we go on like this, there will not be any farmland anymore in Hong Kong. We don't want agricultural rehabilitation, we want to develop farming locally, we want a farming policy, we want to protect the farmers, we insist on no demolition, no removal. Please withdraw the plan. Next one, Ms. Lo Shui Shum. Good morning, everyone, I'm a villageer in Ma Shibo Village. Some 20, 30 years ago, I lived in Kaolun, and after I got married, I moved to Ma Shibo. After this NE-NT project has been announced, I find it strange that Hong Kong, they said that Hong Kong should be our home. Now, we are seeing the situation where those who are in power are trying to tear down our home. They want this piece of land to house applicants on the PRH waiting list and subdivided units. They are putting, positioning us against these groups of people, and it's just that you have made a mistake in your policies, and why are you passing the burden or the responsibility to take the blame onto our villages? You've also selected non-indigenous villages to develop, I find it also strange, and you are unfair to us, and you are discriminating against us. People live in subdivided units because there are exorbitant property prices, and I think it has everything to do with a mistake in your policies, and why do we have to take the responsibility for you? You are saying that you would give out a cash flow of $600,000, but how long can it last? Well, we don't want any demolition, we don't want your money. We would not move, because this is our home, we've been here for so long, we've lived here so long. You can't force us out, you can't drive us out of our homes. We enjoy our life here, please do not ask us to go away. Please, don't sacrifice the interests of the non-indigenous villagers, please. Why is it that every time, it's the interest of the non-indigenous villages are being sacrificed? I don't know how you consider your policies. Is it because we are so powerless, we don't have the money to take you to court? Next, Mr. Chen Kai San. I didn't live here originally in Ma Shibo, but then I came here to farm, and I enjoyed the rural life so much. NT farmland should not be developed, rather, the farmland should continue to exist. Take my farmland as an example, while actually, a lot of the waste produced by the urban areas will be disposed in the NT areas, and actually, a lot of these products can be turned into compost products for fertilizing the land, and we are having low carbon farming, and it's low cost, non-toxic, and that can be sold to the urban residents. So our vegetables, vegetables are reasonably priced, and we are selling only around $20 per kati for our vegetables, and my mother buys some, you know, vegetables from the mainland at $60 per kati. So we're not thinking about profiteering in our farmland, but more, how we can continue with our farming practice so that we can help Hong Kong people have fresh vegetables and contribute to the earth's... and contribute to the earth's sustainable development. Now, through different activities, we are trying to convey the same message to... A lot of people always say that only a minority of people are engaged in green farming, and the economic benefits are low. But you have to appreciate that the property developers are trying to develop land, and they lack community support. All right, we are in a minority, and it may take years before we achieve any outstanding results. But I think we are doing a worthwhile job. My farm is a very good example. It's a good example of rural-urban integration. And this is something which is widely acclaimed in the international community. We are leading a simple life and a low-cost life. And we would like those who have their eyes set on making money to rethink what life is all about. How, what, how can you be satisfied in your life or lead a satisfactory life? Please listen to what we have to say. And you have the muster up the courage to heed to our demands. Next one, Mr. Lee Mo Yun. I am against the NENT project. While some of us may not be qualified for a BRH, six hundred thousand dollars is the ceiling. Farmer or someone may not get as much as that amount. And that's not enough to pay for a private flat. And for those low-income earners as myself, you might have to rent a partitioned flat ultimately. So our interests may be sacrificed. I don't think this is fair on us. In order to address the housing problem, you are relocating us. But why can't you talk to the golf club and ask them to hand over their land so that these people do not have to be relocated? Why don't you do that? Is it because they are the rich group and they can enjoy a better life? And then they can play golf at the leisure time? And for us, we are just the grassroots. And our interests can be sacrificed. If the housing problem persists, are the interests of the grassroots going to be sacrificed again? I think this is very unfair. Next one, Mr. Chen Hui Wen. I would like to sing a song for the secretary today. Chairman, please don't stop me because this song is all related to NENT development. You are removing our homes, and the CE is supporting you, behind you, and you are netting profits from selling land, and you are collaborating with your wife to make a lot of money. You're so greedy. You are also working with your son to make money. And you are trying to threaten us and force us out from our homes. If I have the right, if you have the right to choose your fate, this secretary might have to, would be marrying several women to help him out in making money. And you are trying to wipe us out. Well, you are offering us a compensation of six hundred thousand dollars? And some people say that, please, don't block my way of becoming rich. And you are trying to take out Pingcha Village out of the plan. And then you are wiping out the Hakka culture and the neighborhood, very core to the neighborhood relationships there. CY said that my Hong Kong is my home. Well, I don't agree with that. There is no need to develop Kootong North, and we are going to pay a high price for this development. Well, they are trying to kill your family or intoxicating your family. The golf club, they are paying a low rental. Well, and because you are so poor, you are not being loved or protected. I'm all against the NENT project. A lot of mainlanders have come to Hong Kong several decades ago, and they've been here for several decades, and they worked hard, and they live and work peacefully here in Hong Kong. Now, someone here in this room was hoarding land and was handing over the benefits to the in-laws. And without good planning, the government is trying to drive a lot of the villagers out of their homes.
And they're taking away the room to live from the residents. And they're taking away rural life. Rural life is not something to be enjoyed by officials and the privileged alone. Even grassroots should enjoy this kind of life. I want to sing a song to you so you understand that we are struggling, just like you did in the past. Time's up for you, Ms. Ip Chi Kiu. Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, everyone. I'm all against NENT development. Because I care about the life and death of a person. I have a book on death in Hong Kong. I know that the secretary is a Christian. And in the book, there are some thoughts on death by Taoism. According to them, a soul will have a different weight depending on the person's deeds. A light soul belongs to someone who did good deeds. For someone, a sinner, the soul will be a heavy one. This is the logic of Taoism. And believing in God or having religion cannot ensure you have a light soul. It all depends on your good deeds. So one should mind one's deeds and not to commit any crimes, commit any sin. So if you do good deeds, then you have a beautiful soul. So according to Taoism, everyone can make his way to heaven by doing good deeds. There are different books in Taoism which are about morality and doing good and bad deeds. After one's dead, or depending on his bad and good deeds, he will go up or down, that is to heaven or hell. There are different definitions of good and bad deeds. And now, sometimes mortals can't tell good and bad deeds. But the most important thing is your state of mind when you make the decision. Secretary, I hope you will go to heaven as soon as possible. I hope God will take you there. I hope you will have a good end. Deputations and individuals, you're supposed to comment on NENT. Please focus on that. I'm talking about life and death. I have to remind individuals and deputations that your speech is not protected by powers and privilege. Please be reminded of that, and I hope you will make good use of time to make your views heard. Please go on. Please go on. For those who are here, please think about what you want for yourself after your death. Ms. Ip Wing Ching. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Chairman. I would like to tell you a story, which is about two stories. There are two planets, one called garden, one called building. The building planet is like the earth with seven million people living there. There is crowded with buildings. Two hundred thousand flats are vacant. And everyone on the planet worked really hard so that they will make sufficient money to buy a flat. Skyscrapers are creating a wall effect, and the fresh air can't go into the city. That's why everyone has to turn on the air conditioners, and they have to lead a high-carb emission life, high-carbon life. The ruler was worried that he would not have any friends, and he is under a spell, and he doesn't care about the people. Now, it was said that when the ruler was born, the king was born, six hundred eighty-nine crowds flew in the sky, and so he had to listen to the crowds. On the other planet, there were seven million people. And on this planet, the garden planet, there is no building, no skyscrapers, and it's all green. Everyone can borrow a piece of land from the king for farming to build a home, and the land will be returned when they are dead. These people can play music, they do gardening, they work very hard every day. And so they are very healthy. Even when they die, they are happy. It will follow your conscience. Now, these people follow their conscience, and so they enter heaven after their death. Please focus on NENT. You've spent two minutes on other issues. So do you want to live on the building planet or garden planet? Chairman, members. My teacher said that we should contribute to society and we should be kind. Do you think I am a good example? I repeat once again, our topic here is NENT project. Please focus on that. Please focus on the topic. Without Chairman's prior permission, you shouldn't speak. Rule of procedure, Chairman. Please allow stakeholders affected by the project to exercise their right to speak. The speeches are related to NENT project, and I'm very glad to see someone so young sitting here to make their voices heard. Maybe their skills in public speaking may not be the same as members, but please tolerate them. I'm simply giving them a reminder. I'm not stopping them. But I urge deputations to make good use of the three minutes. Your speech should be related to the topic. I just reminded them about that. Contents, I can't control that. If the contents amount to any insult, please be reminded that you are not protected by powers and privilege. So this is my reminder. Next, Ms. Chen Yan Yu.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman and members. I want to tell you a story, which is about killing hen to take the eggs. A couple who is very, they are very poor. And one day, their hen laid a golden egg, and the wife was very happy and told the husband about it. The husband thought that only one golden egg would be laid per week. And in a month, they would only get four golden eggs. They would not make much profit. They wanted to make profit in a short period of time. And so they cut open the tummy of the hen so they will have lots of golden eggs, and they could sell them. But when they cut open the tummy, then they did not find any golden eggs. They regretted the eggs very much. I think the government and the rich are like this couple. They take large pieces of land for NENT development. They affect lots of people, this generation, the generations to come. Please don't make wrong decisions. Don't wipe up farmland because in doing so, we will only be left with buildings. We will have nothing other than that. Next.
Please remain silent during the meeting, otherwise you will disrupt our meeting. And you may be asked to leave. Mr. Cheng Chi Ho.
Good morning. I want to tell you my background. I'm in my thirties. I grew up in Yunnan. In the past thirty years, I witnessed the changes in rural and urban area. I think Hong Kong's environment is deteriorating. When we go to the rural area, we see storage areas, and you rarely see foods. What you see, weeds on vacant lots. In the urban area, it's crowded with skyscrapers. The NENT project emphasizes on housing development, job opportunities, transport. I'm just thinking, is it right that we only need these three in our life? With these three, does it mean that our needs are all satisfied? Hong Kong is deteriorating. The environment is deteriorating. When we talk about development, the planners, the government just implement something that's rigid. It's like they think we only need housing and job opportunities. They never thought about energy and all the matters. Two years ago, I went to Ma Shipou, and I became a farmer then. Through farming, I understand how difficult farming is. And we then made use of food waste in farming. In doing so, a twenty thousand square foot plot can accommodate two tons of food waste per month. We can make good use of the food waste and grow vegetables, grow produces that can be sold to people living in the urban area. I think this should be one of the development direction. But the government simply focuses on building different ports and focuses on housing development. But all these end up in chaos, in messes. I think the government is very rigid all along. It doesn't have the courage to do something different. And finally, I want to quote from Matthew in the Bible about sowing seeds. And seeds sown to the grounds and different areas will have different ends. Some are picked up by Satan. Time's up for you. Next, Ms. Tang.
I am the so-called potheads. I've been living, I've been working in Kaolun, and we can't afford buying any flats in Kaolun and the urban area. The development project is so far away, and we have to travel for two hours from urban area to the development area. So I have to start working at ten, and I go off work at eleven. This is what is happening to many Hong Kong people. And I have to spend three, four hours per day to go between the workplace and my home. Is the NT really for us? Now, if I want to... Now, if I want to lead a leisure life, I may choose to move to a village and to do some farming myself. But even if I want to do that, you are destroying farmlands, you are destroying people's way of life in the NT. So don't say the project is for Hong Kongers. We are your target, but we don't need you to take away other people's homes to build something that is not addressing our needs. You should make use of land in Hong Kong Island and Kaolun. The property price is so high that we can't get married and start a family and own our home. Now, we take a step back, we hope for a second best, we want to move to the rural area and lead a simple life. But now, you are ruining the life of the villagers and these people think they are pitched against us. But then, I think the crux of the matter is the housing policy of the government. Many people need organic vegetables, vegetables, vegetables produced locally. Even senior officials, they want to get these products. But then, on the other hand, you take away farmland producing these products. So what are we to do? Many people, Hong Kong people like to go to Taiwan, they want to live in the hostels there. In fact, we can have these in Hong Kong. But you are developing the rural area and people have to pay to enjoy a good life in the rural area. Your project is not one for Hong Kong people, it's one for the private developers. And you are trying to build a luxury city for the rich in the boundary. Alright, time's up, Ms. Fan Wai Gen.
I am against this so-called NDA project in NENT. Ma Shipou Village, in fact, is developing. They are developing farming, they have organic farming there, they are producing fresh and safe vegetables for people. They are producing for people living in the urban area and other areas. They are already having good development. How come developers and the government are taking away the farmland and develop these so-called new towns there? There is other land for the government to build housing. But they make use of all sorts of excuses not to use this land. They are taking away land where people are already using. I think rich people and developers have hoarded so much land in NT. That's why you launched this project, you are trying to make money here. We should keep the farmland in NT because they can ensure vegetable supply in Hong Kong. You can also ensure the way of living of the farmers. The farmers are professionals. If you are taking away their means of life, what should they rely on? Are you asking the farmers to wear a suit and to go to work in central, in the financial sector? We should thank these people, the farmers, they are working for us. They are working in a very adverse environment and yet, they are producing vegetables for everyone in Hong Kong. You should not take away their means of living. Apart from that, the way of life and the living environment of the villagers should be respected. There are many bugs and there are many animals living on the same piece of land. We are taught from a very young age that we should respect life and nature. The government is now resuming land. Has the government respected these creatures? You can't go back once you build the buildings. You may say someone should sacrifice, but these sacrifices are unnecessary. We need farming, we need farmers in Hong Kong. And Hong Kong people need locally produced vegetables, we need green area, we need fresh air, we need farmland so that our next generations will understand how the vegetables are produced. They should not think that vegetables come in packages in supermarket and animals need habitat. They can't live in a concrete forest. Yesterday, Paul Chan talked about the Bible and talked about doing justice. But you can't do justice just by quoting from the Bible, Ms. Marion.
Good morning, good morning, Mr. Chan. In the first session, you said that there is not much land in the city for development.
Yes, so and I know that the iodine in Gudong is very high. But if there's too much absorption of iodine, it leads to skin cancer and other diseases. So is this suitable for building government housing? If you think that is appropriate, then I would feel you are just trying to deal with government housing. You have not considered whether, when the public relocate, the consequences they will face. I'd like to talk about Ma Si Bo. There's a lot of farmland in Ma Si Bo. We've heard a lot from the residents there. But there are a lot of buildings that are like a screen and you're now building even more buildings. It will lead to worse air pollution. So I feel if you really want to resolve housing and build more public housing, then you should consider other options, not relocating people from their farms, prohibiting people from farming. Secretary, I would like you to have fresh produce rather than toxic produce, thank you. Next. As a CU graduate, um, Mr. Paul Chan, using the school motto, I feel disappointed because the public are now shouldering a heavy burden. Mr. Chan, I urge you, or I hope that you, people who, students who are disappointed, who are insulted, you should apologize to them. The NENT is not a single issue. I live in Dagbulang. I, there are a lot of mainland students coming. We have the Hong Kong Chuhai Macau Bridge, we have the high-speed rail link. So we see that the SAR wants to integrate Hong Kong with the Shenzhen, even though the previous term, the government and current term deny that. But we already have the documents in front of us. People who have interests can benefit a lot. A lot of officials and legislators. They have different interests, they are selfish, we, the majority of taxpayers have to bear the brunt. People growing up in Hong Kong, people who grew up, who were born in Hong Kong, people who have worked hard in Hong Kong. We are now a metropolis, but under the last few terms of government, we are now becoming a homogenous after reunification of the mainland. Besides brainwashing education, we see lies, logical errors. So under these circumstances, what kind of people will our next generation grow up into? The government and legislators, if these are not, if sustainable development is not promoted, then our lifestyle will only deteriorate. Today, we have NENT, in the future, we'll have other plans to sell out Hong Kong. The government is using different policies to test the population, the officials, legislators. Have you upheld Hong Kong's core values? Mr. Gordon Cho from Dachshund Policy Research Center. This development plan needs transparency and it needs a clear implementation. To accelerate development, the excrement level is set at four thousand feet, but there's no scientific basis for that. In development, we need to also consider preservation. In the new towns, we should have farm rehabilitation and also we need to minimize environmental degradation. The government needs to provide more information on site identification, water quality and so on. So, Yunnan, uh, have a lot of old villages and indigenous villages. So cultural heritage should be developed into a form of tourism. Gudong, Fanlang, we have a few parks. And in the community, we should build more, uh, parks. In terms of transport, the new town should be an environmental town. There should be bicycle paths, there should be pedestrian paths, there should be, uh, we should promote the use of green vehicles. But the daily, uh, transport network should be maintained at an affordable level. We also need to review the plot ratio from three point five, it's going to be changed to six. So the government should review this ceiling or maximum of six, plot ratio of six. The building density should also be reviewed and we should also comply with the Hong Kong Planning Standards Guidelines. And each person should have two square meters of leisure space. Community harmony. The government can promote a cross-generational, uh, concept. We should have people who can age in place. To summarize, the environmental town is the trend. If we can handle the issues I mentioned, then it can be a green, sustainable model. Ms. Lam.
I object to the NENT plan and I urge it to be withdrawn. Just now, officials had heard the villages. This plan will involve resumption of a lot of land, it will destroy the agricultural industry. I'm not an indigenous villager and I didn't grow, grow up in a village. I'm just a resident in a new town. So through activities, I visited Ma Si Hang and Ping Chee. So in a one or two-day visit, I can feel that the residents love their land. They grew up on the land. They've spent generations there. Resumption of land and development uh, will destroy this lifestyle. The young villagers, old villagers are engaged in agriculture, they're farmers. They are self-sufficient. They can earn a livelihood through their own blood, sweat and tears. But very unfortunately, this development plan will destroy this ecology and resource. So why can't Hong Kong's development retain these, uh, heritage? Developing a new town is, uh, building high-rise and a shopping mall and the shopping mall is connected to the subway system. Is that the only mode? The so-called sustainable development should balance economy, ecology and the people, it's not just GDP. Because that can enhance livelihood and we also need to reduce the use of resources in order to achieve sustainable development. The northeast development has economic values, ecological values and heritage values. But what are you going to do after you resume the land? Are you going to give monetary compensation? The government I would like to say finally that land use in Hong Kong belongs to the general public. And the choice should not rest with the government or real estate developers. You should respect the community. I'd like some figures and after looking at this, I have a few questions. We see that it can provide thirty-seven thousand seven hundred job opportunities, how is that calculated? There's a lot of industrial buildings in Fanlang, why can't we revitalize these industrial buildings? We hear in the news that Sha Tin is successful, we need another Sha Tin. Yes, it's successful, it was the first generation of new towns in the nineteen seventies. The area was eight thousand hectares, farmland was thirteen thousand hectares. But now, looking at twenty eleven, our farmland is only some five thousand one hundred hectares. After forty years, there's been a big change. If we still adopt the new town model, for example, in the eighties, Dongchung, Jangguan, Oh, Tinsuai. Why don't you say we need a Tinsuai? Uh, it was described, uh, Tinsuai has been described as the city of sadness. You had recruited Hong Kong U to do a survey, where's the data? What makes you think that the new town development can restore our glory of the seventies? If we are to repeat a successful colonial new town, then when will we review our policy to deal with the population and housing problems?
Ms. Li Su Man. I'm just a typical resident. This will destroy the NTNE. If it's implemented, it will destroy natural ecology and the local agricultural industry. It will also destroy people's homes. It will create a greater chasm in the rich and poor, between rich and poor. I support local agriculture. Hong Kong has a very low self-sustaining agricultural business. So we can't lose any agricultural land. This plan will sacrifice a lot of agricultural land, especially organic produce will suffer. Even though there is compensation for farmers, they will be given a farmland to. But for organic farming, you, just giving a piece of land, uh, relocate to another place will work. For example, organic farming
For example, organic farming needs years of soil improving uh improvement. The Hong Kong government. Has negligible support for the agricultural industry, now you want to resume their land and relocate them. You. Oh, the local farmers. And you will destroy their efforts over the decades. The whole N E N T. Uh encourages real estate developers to. To hold on to land. If you continue using the private public sector model, you are just repeating the past. You will. Further exacerbate the rich poor chasm. We should use urban land to build government housing, we should not. Sacrifice the end new territories villages. Greeners Action, Yip Chiu Man. We had. Attended the development panel meeting last year and we're happy to see the secretary. We don't see any change in the blueprint and there's no response to our concerns. The government talks about population and housing needs. But there has been no consideration of carrying capacity. The situation we see is that there has to be reclaim uh reclamation from the sea. Flattening of mountains. We have Dong Chong, Hong Se Kiu, uh so on. But the Greeners Action feels that in twenty ten, the government. Had forecast the population will reach eight point eight million. But it has revised downwards to eight point four million. So without a population population. To. Resume agricultural land based on faulty data, uh we object to that. Another point is. The government says it needs to meet housing demand, so our precious agricultural land. Will have to be converted into real estate. But. We see there is a stable agricultural output, it just needs a sustainable long term planning. Uh it needs agricultural policy support. The food safety problem on the mainland is getting out of hand. In Hong Kong, we can have a quality produce supply. Food safety, food security are all related to agriculture. So we have a lot of Ma Si Bo villagers here today and they have a community farm. And that maintains a community relationship. The farms. Can handle the food waste and we see. There is a urban rural uh sustainable partnership. So as a cosmopolitan city, we shouldn't just have shopping malls. We also need natural. Uh environment for our children, for our residents to breathe fresh air. Uh we don't want to see homogeneous artificial man made parks. We would like the secretary to hear our views and come up with a better planning, thank you.
Next. The floor um is open to members' questions. Who to speak for Dr. Fernando Zhang, Miss Emily Lau, Miss Claudia Moe. Gary Fan. Four of you, four minutes each. Doctor Fernando Zhang. First of all, thank you deputations for coming here. We've. Listened to um views and feelings shared by farmers. The chairman. Just now, you reminded them to focus on speaking about the subject today, I think they have. Uh spoken to the point, in fact. And their stories they share highlight the conflicts that we are facing today. I think the um Garden Planet story is uh is great. Uh we want to become a garden planet and we don't want uh N E N T to be turned into a building planet. Several friends said that we lack a farming policy. As far as policy is concerned. It seems that agricultural policy falls within the ambit of the Food and Health Burial. I think I find it most strange. Food hygiene. Has to do uh of food and health. Is. Um takes care of uh food safety, food and uh and health burial. But then agricultural policy goes beyond food safety. So my question is, uh secretary. If you want to proceed with developments like the N E N T project. Have you considered agricultural development? In the, within the S A R G. Is there such a thing as agricultural policy? Of course, um within the A F C E D, there are three, in the website, there are three paragraphs on agricultural policy. The first paragraph is about um adopting the principle of free market economy unless except under. Uh exceptional circumstances, um the there will be a free market economy. And then the government will not interfere proactively, that's the agricultural policy, that's very strange. So secretary, uh what's your view of agricultural policy? Would you consider it when you are developing um the sites in the N T? Thank you, Doctor Fernando Zhang for your question. Agricultural policy falls within the ambit of the Food and Health Burial. A lot of people talked about farming policies, we go back and uh and take a look and reflect those views. In considering the N E N T N D A. We've also consulted colleagues from other burials like the Food and Health Burial. And what. The measures will be in the future. And to my understanding, they are also studying the matter in the um N D A. When our colleagues make the planning, the first focus is to help the farmers there to. Um engage in agricultural rehabilitation. In the last session, we talked about the arrangements for agricultural rehabilitation. Um we understand that what the A F C D. Is doing now should should not suffice. And that's why. We are working with the Food and Health Bureau. To uh. Press ahead with tasks. To make better arrangements um for agricultural rehabilitation. At initially, a total of twelve point five hectares of farmland land would be affected. In Kutong North and South, we have reserved land for farming rehabilitation. And there are other plots for that purpose in the N E N T N D As. So put simply, on farming rehabilitation, the um. It is the Food and Health Burial which is taking charge of the policy. But of course, you can talk directly with them and I will also reflect your views to the burial. Miss Emily Lau, well, thank you chairman and thank you deputations for coming here. I understand that there have been three hundred requests to speak here. So we will continue to listen to you today and next week, I think the issue is a contentious one. And I think the there has been a negligence on the duty on the part of the administration. Uh well, it's so contentious, the issue, it means that the policy has not really mature, reached a mature stage. Now, um some people said that they have been forced out of their homes last year. We discussed the matter with the secretary and the secretary promised that they would try to help. Now, we are listening to the same views again today and Mister Yong today also said that. Uh and asked when you will go and survey the households and freeze the households. And that's also very important. Because um a lot of people will be going down to the areas to force people and to. Out of their homes and acquire land. Secretary, can you tell us, uh is it true that many people have been driven out of their homes? Does the government have a grasp of the situation, are you going to do anything to help? Well, I'll tackle the first part of the question and then I'll ask Miss Lin to talk about the the survey. On the fourth of July, we announced. The proposal after the third P exercise. Uh we. Talked about the enhanced C N T A. For plots. Which have been zoned, um private residential development. And for these property owners in those eyes can apply for institute land exchange. Meeting the four criteria that I mentioned, that the land plot should not be less than four thousand square meters in size. And they should be um uh taking work forward, aligning with our timetable. And also. These uh applicants. Should. Make reasonable compensation to the tenants, existing occupiers, um to those land plots. Uh who are residing on the land on the fourth of July. Well, Miss Lin, on the surveying of the households. As I said several days ago, um in this panel meeting, some members asked. Uh can we do the survey uh before the demolition earlier? As I explained, all along, we are carrying out the survey in phases. Um the project may last, say, six years, well, for this particular project, it lasts um for ten years. So that will be done in phases, so during this ten years, there will be population changes in the area, so all along. And when we have designated a certain period for a certain phase of works. And then before that, we will go out and do the survey. But for this time round, we know that there have been concerns. So internally, we have the plan to conduct the survey earlier. But I hope that members and friends here can appreciate that. The in conducting the survey before the demolition, we will not make the announcement of the date beforehand. But I can assure you that we're practicable, we will do it as soon as we can. But I can't really make open the timetable because we want to do it um um fairly and partially and justly. Well, whenever we mention the term uh being people, people being cleared away. Uh we look at it from two angles, first, if um the property owner has a contract with the tenant. And he, well, based on the requirements of the rental contract, he can do it legally, he's not breaching the law. Now, of course, if there are people using dirty tricks to threaten the tenants and they're not. Uh asking tenants to move out based on the conditions of the contract, then that is going against the law. So when we talk about people being cleared, we have to um look at it from that angle as well. So the secretary said that if um people or property developers, owners would um like to apply for developing on the land. Um on that, uh they have to meet with a certain criteria and that took effect on the fourth of July. So if landlords uh um apply for lease modifications or land use modifications. We will make the relevant announcement and if. People who have lived here, who have lived there. Um on the fourth of July or afterwards and they are not sure whether they would be entitled to the compensation level as required. Then they can make inquiries with us and we will um provide information to them. And actually, that measure took effect on the very day of the fourth of July. So we will also be sending out information to the affected people and we will also set up a hotline to take people's inquiries. So can uh some time be left later on? Yes, Miss Claudia Moe next. This morning. We. Passed the motion of. Requesting or asking Mister Porton to step down. Now, we continue to ask questions, ask him questions on the subject, I think it's very awkward. And even members of the Pro Establishment Cam. Uh asking the secretary to uh set aside his duty of on this project. Even though he's not asked to to step down. As what Miss Doctor Fernando Zhang said, why can't you resume land from the Fanlang Golf Course? Well, at least half or two um thirds, as some people requested. The administration said that there is a a contract lasting until a certain time and so on. When you look at the contract closely. Then it says clearly that the government can use um the reason of a. A public interest to resume the land immediately. Can the administration tell us whether you would consider this proposal? Now, in this N E N T project, you are wiping out the villagers and wiping the farming land. And you would not go down the route of resuming the land from the Fanlang Golf Course. Um can the administration respond? Um. On the Fanlang Golf Course, we've talked about that many times at the panel meet and this panel meeting. Whatever we do, we should have good reasons, I think public interest is a reason good enough. Um Ms. Moe, can you leave, ask it, well, let the secretary finish what he wants to say. Well, the land is a hundred and seventy hectares in size. And if you want to cut it, well, if we want to take one third of the land and that is still a sizable area. We have to um conduct E I A and we have to make arrangements for sewerage, we have to provide. Um the necessary transport facilities, we have to provide jobs, community facilities, the overall arrangements. Um all these have to be um arranged and we need to consult the public too. So that may take well up to two to three years' time. Now, if at this stage, we say that we are going to take away um. Half or two thirds or one third of the land to replace the N E N T project, that's not feasible, as I said, we've. Uh we've, we will include it in the N T North uh planning study and that will be conducted in the first half of next year. And also, the H A B will conduct a review on the uh use of land by recreation clubs. So that is going to happen too. I don't get it. Obviously, the government has not previously considered taking back land from the golf club. I'm not being hostile to the rich. I think it has to do with the mistake made by the government in planning. And you are now shifting your burden onto the villages. And you are telling us that if we want to work on the uh the golf course and then it will take two to three years' time. I think. It has to do with an male administration on the part of the government and you are asking the whole society to take responsibility for a mistake you make. Well, chairman, when I was here eh last July. Well, chairman, when I was here last July, June last year to introduce the N E N T plan, well, at that time, nobody floated the idea of a Fanning Golf Course. And at that time, even some members even proposed that the project should be taken forward as soon as possible. This idea was only arose when we were in the Third P E exercise. So we can take back the land for inclusion in the land application list as a short-term measure. Now, I want to warn this lady again not to create any disturbance anymore. Next one, Mr. Gary Fan. Thank you, chairman. I would like to thank the villagers for coming up. I would like to particularly thank Ms. Chen Yan Yu, Ling, Ms. Yip, and Ms. Shi to come here to express your views. And the government is being very unsympathetic and trying to bulldoze your homes. I think this is most regrettable. Secretary, I hope that you can really appreciate the villagers' feelings. Well, as far as policy is concerned, we've talked a lot about it. I think we share our feelings here today, and I hope that you would also take heed of that. I think you are very skilled in playing around with words. You are even better than C Y Leng. Your wife's declaration or statement last night, before 10th of October last year, you, your wife, and your two children do not own an interest in Orient Express. But in fact, the shareholders of this company is your wife and your son. I think you are trying to play around with words. You are trying to create the illusion here. You are trying to use very complicated words to create an illusion. Chairman, you may say that the remarks of the deputations are too far-fetched, but I think their stories are related to what we are discussing here. But what the secretary doing here is they're trying to use very technical jargons, completing language to obscure the facts and to try to hide all his interests behind the whole matter. So that's why we are having such a strong opposition. Your wife has a 76% interest in Harvest Charm Development, and he, and for the other half, he's holding it on behalf of the Classical Success Limited. If what is said is true, then we don't, we can do away with the declaration interest system of senior government officials. Well, you really hold an interest, but then you say that you are holding an interest on behalf of someone else. I don't think that it works at all. If, well, you are trying to play around with words, but then we've lost faith in you. You can't stay on the position anymore. For the benefit of yourself, your family, for the N E N T residents, and for the government as whole, you should think of stepping down. Chairman, I don't see why the Mr. Gary Fan doesn't understand these two paragraphs. In the first paragraph, I don't have it on hand with me. The first paragraph says that apart from O Y, Orient Express, she, myself, and my children don't have any land interest in N E N T. And in the past several days, my wife has, through Orient Express, held land interest. Secondly, Mr. Fan mentioned about Classic Success, the shareholding. The statement sets clearly that Orient Express holds a 75% in Harvest Harm Development. Thirty-five, 70% is his, is real interest, and 37.5% is held on behalf of O Y. And in O Y, we, myself and my wife and my children don't have any beneficial, beneficial interest in that company. So that's why I've, I will be asking a lawyer to scrutinize the documents and make some explanation. So chairman, please allow me to say two more points.
Just now, a deputation said that I am afraid of going into legal proceedings. When N E N T was proposed, I took the initiative to meet political parties. I met with the D P and Mr. Li Wing-Tat was there. And it was said that we assessed the risk of going to court of litigations. I never said that I'm worried about going into litigations. When Mr. Li Wing-Tat said that in City Forum, I called him in that very afternoon and made clarification over the phone. He agreed that I did not say I was worried about litigations. As a responsible government, we, however, have to consider the risk of litigations when we made our assessment. Secondly, Mr. Yong mentioned my wife and her family members that 19 years ago, when they purchased the land in Kutong. He mentioned that. I think Mr. Yong implied that I took some interest in the procedures. This is a very serious allegation, but it did not happen. If you want to make the allegation, it has to be supported by facts. In 1993, we had territory-wide planning. And at that time, Kutong North was not included. Kutong North was only considered in 1996. That is, two years after they purchased the plot. So you have to be fair. Thank you. Any further questions from members? If not any replies from the administration, I would like to ask Ms. Lee from the Lands D to talk about Masipou, to talk about Masipou, the development there. All right, Ms. Lee.
Twenty-four hectare of farmland will be affected in N T North. That is, after the survey of the A F C D and relevant departments. Masipou is next to Shengshui. New Tang is actually opposite Lunwahui. In the south, there are urban developments. It, the Masipou will be part of the city center of Fanning. And so the land there has to be resumed. It will be for public and private housing development to address our housing needs. To address our serious housing needs inevitably, we have to develop existing land. Sorry, I will be brief. And just now, Ms. Marian mentioned Kutong North, the discovery of iodine, which may be poisonous to future residents. I'll defer to C E D D, Mr. Leng there, to respond to that point. Please be succinct. Thank you, secretary, for the C E D D. When we conducted ground investigation there, we discovered in Kutong North iodine. And according to our consultancy firm, according to the experience in ground investigation, we have to view that the iodine exist there is natural. And so in the E I A report, we made a comprehensive health assessment to see the impact, to see whether there will be any impact in the development process. And there will be appropriate measures introduced. 571 milliliter of iodine there. And we think after the appropriate measures are introduced, health will not be affected. All right, that's time for, that's the end of our session. We'll now have the lunch break. We resume at 2 o'clock. Please come back on time. Thank you.